Thank you. We'll start our public hearing this morning. Our public hearing will be on Governor Communication 11,413, which is on Public Works Supplemental Budget. This public hearing was scheduled to go with you more, but it was rescheduled to today. So we're gonna have it today. And I'd like to thank you Director of Public Works and your staff for being with us this morning. I have with me my Vice Chairman, Speaker, Chairman, Vice Chairman of GHW, Chairman and Vice Chairman and Member of RED Committee. And I have our Legal Counsel and our Chief Clerk. I'd like to thank Chief of Budget for being with us this morning. The Chief of Finance will join us. She's one of the witnesses, but she's in another meeting and will join us later. So thank you again for being with us to help us understand your budget. I'd like to give you the floor, Director, to give us a summary of your proposed budget. Thank you.
Kambar Chairman, with me this morning, I have my Deputy Robert and the Contract and Engineering Management Chief Kiman and our Engineer Rani. This is the budget that we're asking is for the roadside maintenance and that we do every year. Just we added the railing for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start for any questions. I understand all the contracts for the previous appropriation ended in July. So now you're requesting for the roadside maintenance can continue. Every year, when the legislature appropriate a fund, then you have to advertise, bid out, and then participants submit their bid for one year. The question is, can we bid out for contractors for the roadside maintenance for two or three years? And whenever the contract is drawn up and then put a language in there that funding will be certified annually, so you don't have to bid every year. So after three years, you go ahead and repeat the project. Can that be done on your part? Of course, that's why we need the Chief of Finance and Chief of Budget this year, what I saw, she can also help. So go ahead, Director.
I think that's a very good idea. Especially at the end of the year, we have to wait almost like two months with no service because we're waiting for the bidding and all this stuff to finalize. So if you can do something for like you said, three years, given if the funding is available, then I think it's something that can be done and it's much better, it's easier for the contractor and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to give LC to make comment if that is something that is allowable under Financial Management Act and Regulation.
The pavement maintenance has always been considered a project, not operations. So it should be able to appropriate for more than one year to cover the project. As for contracts, I would leave that up to the AG to look at, but it should be doable to have a longstanding contract and to ensure that there is certification of funds on an annual basis.
Thank you, LC. Chief of Budget, any input that will make this easy, easier for the, for Public Works and the contractors?
Thank you Chairman. The appropriation you're talking about, is it gonna be for three years? We're gonna do appropriation yearly for that three years.
The appropriation will be annually, depending on a request from Public Works. But it's the bidding process and the contract. That's what we're talking about. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Kamara Chairman, no, I think it can be done. When I was with the Department of Education, there were some contracts for maintenance and security that was more than a year. And it just, although the funding is appropriated annually, the contract remained for a year. And I guess, like you mentioned, the language in the contract is what made the difference, that based on the availability of funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Go ahead, Chair.
Kambar, is that legal to where there's no money, but we put the timeline longer than the money? That's just, I want the legal people to figure that out. So we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. But personally, I think this is better. It allows the contractor, because it's a risk to go out and buy weed eaters and other, you know, costly equipment. But you only are guaranteed a year. If we can maybe move it longer, three, four even, I would go to that extent for them to be able to do the work. But that also means, because we're giving them a bigger window, that I would expect CEM or whoever to be on top of them. As soon as there is a violation, we award somebody else that contract because maybe we're going longer, but we still want them to really be strict with that. But that's just my personal opinion, but I would think it would benefit. It's a risk, you buy all this equipment next year, maybe sell it to the next bidder who want it, but at the lower cost because there's depreciation. But Kambar.
Yeah, go ahead, Director.
I think this is not another thing that we need to look at. I think anything that's over 5,000, we have to be out. And this is more than 5,000 a year.
And thank you. I just wanna give an update to Chief of Finance for the discussion. We, the discussion was on the bidding process. When we appropriate a fund, can Public Works beat the project, the roadside maintenance, for three years? And then the language in the contract to be worked out, that the funding will be available, will make available annually and that certification will be done annually upon legislature appropriating the annual maintenance fund. So we're talking about if it can be done and because you will be doing certifying the fund. So that's why we want you to come in so you can do us. For us, we will await request from Public Works and do the appropriation for annual maintenance fund. It's you, OPV, and of course, AG is obvious that will work with Public Works to ensure that the contract and the bid is done legally. We don't wanna do something illegal. And our LC already gave her opinion that if something can be done and need to work with AG on that. So is there anything you wanna add to that, Chief?
Thank you Chairman, and I'm sorry for coming in late. I wasn't aware of the hearing, public hearing. I think it can be done. But for that, I really need to find out from our financial advisor. We've had contracts that it's been certified like that. It's like a three-year contract, but it's really depending on the availability of funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead, Director.
Actually, for our security, compound security and the janitorial at Public Works, it's three years. The contractor is three years, but it's less than 5,000 a year. By law, anything over five, we have to bid out. It's up to the AG too.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Kambar, so the two things I anticipate that will have to be closely monitored if we go this route is for the Public Works to be on top of the contractor that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing or else they lose the contract. And also submission of the appropriation request timely. So we don't have the situation we had recently, but since we're going for free. Kambar.
Thank you, Chair. Any other, yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair, GHW.
Thank you Chairman. The, I have seen, you know, over the years, I have seen multi-year or certifications of contracts that span over more than, you know, one year. And those contracts are CFSM contracts that the appropriation are two years or until, you know, funds is expended. I wanna go back to the statement made by good Chairman of RED where, you know, it brings into question the certification of funds, contracts, when funds are not available. The difference here is for those CFSM contracts, there actually, there are actually money appropriated for two years. I have not seen a contract certified, certified meaning, you know, there's money, you certify a contract because there is money. So the obligation cannot be there because there's no money appropriated for the contract to be certified. It can only be certified for a year. But it goes back to, you know, to what AG Legal Counsel was saying. It can be done if there is money. I guess, you know, it would have to be based on the revenue projection because we cannot project what's gonna, what's gonna be in next year. So if the appropriation is to happen for multi-year, it has to be appropriated in the year where the revenue projection is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. They, of course, take not certify the money if it's more than. It's the bidding process that we're talking about. So they can award that project to a vendor for three years and then in the contract, they can, there should be a language in there saying the fund will be certified annually. Not for the three years, because legislature will appropriate annually. So at least they don't have to bid again. The bidding is already done. But if they wanna fire some contractor because they're not performing, then that's another process that they have to go through within that period of three years. So of course, finance will not certify anything if the money is not there, but they can certify annually, provided that there's a language in a contract that the project duration is for three years, but the funding will be available annually. So that will be between finance, budget, Public Works and of course AG. To, of course, OPV cannot allot money that legislature did not appropriate. So go ahead, Chairman.
Last comment on the, on the subject, Chairman. I take it as a duty and also pride in working closely with the line departments under our committee to try and be aware of the things they need. So when they come here, we can support them in their efforts to get the funding. But I wanna stress to the department that a while back, when this, it was not the management, that there was an issue or misuse of appropriations for next year was used in the current fiscal for the maintenance, the roadside maintenance. And it ended up causing a problem at that time because, so that we had at one point, there was no contracts for a while because they used that because it was not just maintenance, roadside maintenance, but there was actually potholes and things. So they went over budget. So if there's something like that that needs looking into immediate attention or what have you, send the supplement. Don't touch what's already there so that we can continue to operate within the budget. Kambar.
Thank you Chairman. I have no more comments on this one. Let's move on to Part B of the Supplemental Budget. And this one is for the guard rail repair and replacement. Please go ahead, the manager.
Thank you Chairman. The Part B of our request is for the guard rail repair. As you can see, the breakdown and the area where assessment was taken, that's for the hard, the hard rail for the whole pavement state. And also the amount is, yeah, eighty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, we see that he provides the list at the very last page. It's where all these work will take place and replacements. It's a, it's a detail that, so that, that's good. I just have a question. Some of those rails are still good. It just need to sandblast and maybe repaint. Is that what they're gonna do?
Based on the assessment, especially in MOP, we find out that the guardrails are still intact, but the blocks and the fasteners are all removed. I think that's all because of vandalism. So the guardrail doesn't serve its purpose because it's just hanging there, was a car hit. So we need to replace those. Around the dam or the reservoir area, there are some which was repaired back using I-beam. We should wanna replace them with the concrete block and the wooden block on site.
No, thank you. For me, I don't have a problem with your, with your request. I just have a question that we've seen cars hitting each other on the road. And just my personal assessment, maybe it's because there is no paint that separate the roads. So when they go towards each other, they think they're in their lane because there's no paint. So they end up hitting each other. Is there a plan to paint those roads so you will know that you're in your lane instead of somebody else's lane?
Thank you Chairman. That's a very good question. We can reassess and include that in our assessment and submit to you for your review. But that can be done.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Kambar, I have a couple of questions on this one when I saw the request. The, well, one, I'm sure you're gonna say, fire department, the signage to go along with, because that's part of the road. So is it you, Public Works is waiting for OAG through fire to make the request? And then we, because you're gonna have to put up those, not the fire department. Or is it the fire and the prisoners who put up the signage? So that's one. The second one is, because over the years, you see whether when people hit these, the railing and they get a ticket, there's also money for the damages to government property. And so that's the money, that's in our program, in our treasury, that's the money we're gonna use for this? Or is it something else? I don't know who I'm asking, you Chairman or Public Works.
Thank you Chair. I think the proposal is, has identified IMF to be the one to use for the repair of those rails. Whatever money there is that a court slap on, in addition to the ticket, it should be in the general fund, in the treasury. So this is IMF funding we're talking about. Go ahead.
Regarding the Dutchman, I guess that's kind of a dead man's curve to some extent because that's the most of the damage. Even people who are sober, not drinking and driving fast. And when there's a little rain and the dust becomes a little hydroplane for hydrogliding for cars, they get into that. We're in the discussions, you guys are on the discussions we've had with DOD, we're talking about that part. Because that slope, you slope into the curve, not against it. So you can make it out of there safely. CEM, please come up with some kind of design so you can push this on them because they will have to resurface those roads so they can do a correct, corrective measure for those slopes so that it's safer for the public. Kambar, Kambar.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add on the statement regarding the slope and other curve that we saw at the roads. There should be a road sign that we need to install. That's important. When I saw our roads here, it doesn't show that vertical sign or any roads sign in there, especially in main road. So we need to include that to our design and estimate also the lines, center lines and the edge line, both sides. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And for now, maybe you can also put sign where there's no paint saying stay on your, in your lane or something like that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Now I'm just wondering about the Mozzella Bridge. If there's a plan to replace the, those rail also on those, on the bridge? Because I know a lot of them are missing now. And maybe if you do replace, maybe weld them together so cannot be removed? Maybe including this rail instead of bolt and nut, you weld them together? Thank you.
Thank you. Which bridge are you talking about, Vice Chair? Okay, thank you. And that's a concern by, you know, Vice Chair. And you, will that add additional fund? If that will be done? So can we say that we, for now, we prioritize the road maintenance? And if you can, please include what Vice Chairman is saying and Chairman, what regard to those? And the paint, I, so we reduce the collision that we've seen very often now on the road. So, and then you get back to us. Can we give you, say, two or three weeks or a month for you to come back for this one? Okay, so go ahead, Chairman.
Kambar, right, going back to the signage. A lot of our signs are missing. A lot of them have, the kids have been helpful in writing other numbers on the sign, spraying other numbers besides what we want legally on there. If you need to work it out with OAG to who's in charge of this, do it. Should we, CEM and Public Works? Because you have those maintenance people under you, the roadside maintenance, so they can also do the upkeep on these. One thing I, and I have suggested over this over even last term to people, even police chief at that time, about ninety percent of the cars in Yap have speedometers that are in kilometers per hour instead of miles per hour, ninety percent of the cars. But the ones that are in miles per hour also have underneath it in kilometers per hour in the speedometer, if they're US standard. So when you put the signage in miles per hour, you're doing the service to the others who don't do math conversions in their head as they're driving. So if you can put it in parentheses or somewhere smaller, just like in the regular speedometer where you have the miles and then below that kilometers, just put that in parentheses somewhere, the kilometers per hour to help us who only can afford the right side steering wheel with kilometers per hour so that we're not violating the traffic posted sign, speed limits. Kambar.
Thank you Chairman. I think it's a very good, you know, suggestion that it can also be, because some people are driving and they don't know that they've already gone above the twenty miles per hour. Of course, they're looking at kilometers. And sometimes they're way, way below and slow down their travel because they think they're over that wedding. Thank you for that. And yeah, please take that into your consideration when you start planning for this. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, speaker.
Thank you Chairman. It's just a concern. At times, we want to change the law, but we have not been able to identify. the, what, how we get to where we are today. So moving, going back to the, to the, the maintenance of the road, what is the problem? You see, because of lateness of bidding, the government should be working closely together, OPV, O A S, Public Works. And we all have a computer that would flag that, it's time coming. And we need to, so when we don't identify, what I'm trying to say here is when we don't identify the issues and then move, and then later on, we get faced with the very same issue that we think we're gonna be solving, but we're not solving. So it's good to identify those things, so we won't repeat it again, even if it's a year or a two year or a three year. And if we don't happen to identify those problems, we're gonna face it again. And when we face it, we need to know how we can solve that problem. Because we're here working together to solve the problem. So I've been listening, but it's been moving, moving, moving. But have we identified the problem? Why we get to where we are today? Therefore, we need to change the bidding or the appropriation for the maintenance of the road? That's the first one. The second one is the, we know for the fact that the, all the rail will be somewhere, especially in the, that's the worst one, and people are hearing that so many times. And the dam, the military would do that. Or we need to push that to them to do it, same as our retaining wall here. So if we spend money, we need to be mindful of the fact that we perhaps can use the military funds for this. So let's identify those with rail that we need to, to work on with this specific amount that we, we request that you need. So we know. And that's my, my, my last one. If, have we tried to put our head together to see all that we need, even the sign, all the way to the airport? So we can pass that to the military and we come together and try to package that for them? Say, this is what we want to, since we have the task force with us to identify those things. This is what we need. We need the line to separate the, the, the two lanes that we have. We need the rail and we need the sign. So we don't spend so much of our local revenue on this. So that, that's, that's my, my comment here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Go ahead, Chairman.
Komwar, Komwar, Chairman, and good morning to all the witnesses. I'm looking at the request and I wonder whether the request covers the, only the the existing rails to be replaced or there are new ones? Because, you know, data is important, but sometimes data appears on paper. Sometimes it's just available out there. There's rails that is bent and there are rails that has been erected. And it's remains the same law, evidence of people hitting them. Meaning, those in the past who think that areas of Yap that needs railings, probably today have changed, most especially in areas where there's sharp curve and there's water on the other side, most especially in the work. There are lots of cars going into that areas and there's no rail. At the old, at the road in airport, the straight road, there's a long rails. And on the side, if you're going that way, the terraced is very shallow. And when you look at the rails, there's no sign of accident, dent. So there needs to be an assessment or whether we really need this here or we can remove it and put it where it's needed. That's what I'm trying to get at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree to that, Mr. Chair. Because I saw some part, especially from here going to our airport. There is some part there that we need to install this guardrail and also the sign. And also, I addressed it already to the military, US military, that from this intersection going to the other intersection at Ace Smart, we need to improve our drainage system. It's always flooding in that area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And the speaker was saying, the military will be, we know for a fact now that they're gonna repave the road all the way to the airport. And anything on the side of that road, I think is gonna be part of that. But we need to confirm with, I don't know, the task force, I guess, will have to confirm with the military on what other works will take place when they pave, repair that, this, the road. And so we'll know, we don't wanna put something down, repair, and then they come and take it out because they wanna put there. So to, so we know we can save some money. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Chairman. For the, the military project to, the road from the port to the airport, that's the last project that they're gonna do. That's, they're probably gonna be done in four, four years from now. Do we wait that long? Or we can get this and put it up? And then by the time they're doing the road, we can remove it and restore it for, to replace the other ones that... I know that's the last phase of the project. When they're done with both port, they will do the road. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir Chairman, two things on, on, on this one. Well, I've asked that we start thinking about sidewalk design, because the sidewalk is currently from the hospital onward and from the hill at Miller onward. But the main high-traffic area is missing one. And I was hoping that we could come up with some kind of design, considering the limited space with doing a dual purpose like Pompei State has, where the drainage is below those blocks that is the sidewalk, something like that, to serve that space. And this is something that the D O D people can look at if we have the designs, because they're going to do, do that part of the road. The other one is just something that we've had these problems with traffic over the years, but nobody really thinks whether it's the public entity, the government, that's gonna be responsible for that, or it's the private sector. Like, let's say that exit to the road at Mantaree, when you try to get out of that parking lot onto the main road, there's a couple of residences around in town that are like that, where you almost need some kind of mirror or something on the other side that gets you see what oncoming traffic. Is there some kind of design that perhaps the public can, the government can assist with for, for those kinds of areas? Some kind of dome thing that you can see here, see there, and it's covered like you see in stores or something, but something heavy, heavy duty, obviously. But something as a public service, because these things are gonna continue and as the traffic gets more and more over the years, you get more cars, it's gonna worsen and cause fender benders going to the future. So if you can be proactive with those, that would be great. Komwar, Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director.
Since we are taking this, this back for another two weeks to, maybe we'll, we could add those to it. And also, we'll add all the signage. And then we'll work with, we'll work with the, the police to, we will, we will get the funding and then we'll put up the sign and maintain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Chairman.
Yeah, I know the, Komwar, Chairman, the road going to the hospital, especially Mantaree area, Guangmao, the rail is very bad. It's falling apart. But I wonder whether Public Works know the status of the World Bank funding for the northern road? If it's somewhere closer or we might put up and tomorrow somebody will put it down? I'm, I'm just curious on the status of that project.
Well, I can't give you update. I don't wanna give you false information in real life. Thank you.
No, thank you. Can you find out maybe from P M O? Of course, they're gonna put the cover, the type of, to replace those bridges. I don't know if those rails will be part of it. So please check with P M O. Now that we don't know what's going on with our infrastructure. Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I have no more comments. Our Paul Care this morning is now closed. Thank you.